Good evening and welcome to the Oxford Board of Select meeting for Tuesday, November 30th, 2021. And I call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is vote to approve the legal description of precinct boundaries that have been approved by the state. We have our town clerk here. Welcome, Michelle. Thank you.
Members of the board. So basically, this is the last part of the redistricting for the town. And the state has gone ahead and they finalized the legal description of each precinct boundary. And so that's why I'm here to request your approval on the boundaries that the state has cleared up for the town.
Great. Any comments from the board? Then I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion that the board vote to accept the re-presenting plan for the town of Oxford as presented by the town clerk. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's five in affirmative. They are approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next item is the appointment of Donna M. O'Halloran of 12 Plantation Road, Oxford, to fill the seat as a retiree on the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, we have an advisory insurance committee that has been more recently brought together because as the board is aware, we had been given notice by Fallon Health Plan that they were no longer going to be doing municipalities. So we have a number of appointees that are already there, but we were missing the retiree. And having been a former employee here, more recently, we thought she would be a good person and she had agreed to step forward for that reason.
All right. Thank you. More members' questions? Then I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to appoint Donna O'Halloran of 12 Plantation Road, Oxford, to fill the seat as a retiree for the Insurance Advisory Committee. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's five in affirmative. She is approved. Next item is a change of manager and name only from Ashley M. Place, doing business as Route 12 Variety. And her new name is Ashley M. Delia.
Yes.
Did I do that right?
You did.
Hey.
Yeah. Not many people do.
Welcome.
Just wanted to get the name changed on the license to make it official to my married name.
Right. More members' questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Ms. Delia, I know that you're just changing this for marriage purposes. However, in some of the paperwork, it indicated a change of manager, which I know is not the case. And I just don't want you to have any trouble with the ABCC board. And I didn't know if maybe it should be other? Because this, half the paperwork states that it's a change of manager, when in reality, we're just changing a name.
Could I direct that to D?
That's what they said.
I have to fill out for the name change, because I didn't want.
Okay. All right. Very good then. Okay.
And they waived the processing fee because it's just a change of name, is what they said. Yeah.
Anyone else? All right. Entertain a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve the name change for Ashley Delia, DBA Route 12 Variety.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative. You are approved. Thanks for coming in.
Congratulations.
All right. Next item is our annual Class 1 License Renewals. Due to issues beyond the town's control, we are going to have to postpone this to a later date. Then the next item is our annual Class 2 License Renewals, and it's the same thing. It's due to issues beyond our control, so we will have to deal with this at a later date. Next item on our agenda is the annual Class 3 License Renewals. And this also is something beyond our, that the town has the authority of, so we have to move on to this at a later date. Next item on our agenda would be the snowplow contract for Triano Trade Services. The person has removed their application, so we do not have to consider this at all. That brings us, I believe, to our Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the agenda for my manager's report is something that I'm beyond pleased to be able to announce, and that is that we have been given word right before the holiday, that the town is being given the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, and that is for the development of Oxford's first comprehensive budget document for the previous fiscal year. As I have indicated before, when we were going to submit this comprehensive budget document, that it is the award's highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting. It's the attainment represents a significant achievement and strategic planning milestone for the town of Oxford. And the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award is valid for one year, and as a first-time recipient, will receive a plaque within eight to 10 weeks. And pursuit of this goal was made possible through successful grant efforts and funding from the state's Community Compact Program. There's been excellent teamwork from all the departments. This was not an easy thing. It was difficult during the COVID year, but our department heads, our Finance Director, and the Collins Center, who we actually contracted with, made it all possible. And the reviewers did state that the document for the town of Oxford is very well done. It satisfies or exceeds the criterion, and congratulations on our submission. I want to give a special shout out to Katie McKenna, who worked in my office. Many a day and night are pulling together the documents, and next year, we plan to continue to use the template and add and take the reviewers' comments into consideration. And going forward, I believe it'll allow our public to have even more information about what goes into the budget process. Next item is just to alert the board that on November 11th, the town received a notice from the Massachusetts Bureau of Accounts that our fiscal year 2022 tax rate has been certified. And as you recall, Chris Pupka, our town assessor, delivered a very detailed presentation to the board at the last meeting, and he recommended a non-split rate of $16.16 per thousand valuation, which the board approved. And now it's become certified, which means that we'll have a total maximum allowable levy figure of $26.4 million for the fiscal year '22. The next item is to let the board know, once again, we have another wonderful announcement to make from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, which has notified Chief SAD and my office that we'll be receiving a 911 Department Training Grant totaling $32,323. And obviously, this is terrific news, and it speaks to the ongoing leadership at the Police Department that understands the importance of maintaining, enhancing the professional caliber and skills of our officers. The next item is an update. And I can, you know what I think I'll do is I'll save that till afterwards, because I don't want it to conflict with the town. So I'll come back to it, and we'll go to the next item. Planning Board resignation. I wanted to inform the board of a recent Planning Board vacancy. I received formal notification from Norman LeBlanc Jr. that he has offered, intended his formal resignation from the Planning Board after becoming a duly-elected member of the Board of Selectment. Congratulations, and thank you for notifying my office of that resignation. I know you're missed on the Planning Board already. Electronic Communication Board. A lot of people have been seeing some activity in front of the town hall. As you know, one of my capital projects was to actually do this Electronic Communication Board, which was approved for funding this past year. And we had worked with Sunshine Sign Company, and they have been working with us to actually put together the design of it. And I've worked with Chair of our Historic Commission in looking at aesthetics and trying to be as in-keeping as possible, even though we wanted to bring the old sign up into the 21st century. So if passersby is seeing a lot of activity, it's because so far, they've actually pulled out the old sign. And as you know, we used to have to go out into the elements to change the letters on the marquee board. This update is being provided so that people are aware that the stage that we're at now, we thought it would be easy to dismantle the sign. It actually had a huge cement foundation in it and required a lot of effort to remove that. But the new pylons have been put in. And since becoming the town manager, I'm really excited to think that we're going to have a very state-of-the-art communication, wireless communication board that will allow us to give very timely information to the public, and it will be, I think, really a vast improvement. I did get some photographs today, but rather than showing all the little bits, I thought it would be more exciting for the public to see the whole thing when it comes up. But we expect that shortly. Green Communities Report. I did want to inform the board and the community that our Green Communities Annual Report, the first comprehensive one we've had to file for fiscal year '21, has been done with the Department of Energy and Resources. Again, this is an important milestone for a multi-year grant that we have been able to land by becoming a Green Community designated town. It means that this past year's energy efficiency capital projects, which have a great deal of compliance and reporting data that has to be done, has been submitted. This means now we'll get reimbursed for that. But more importantly, it means that we'll be eligible for the next round, which usually opens in February. That's a competitive round. We just got our first competitive grant this past year for $200,000, and the previous year for about $166,000. So I want to, I bring this up because everyone sees things and activities happening, but they don't realize there's a lot of employees behind that. I want to thank Facilities Director Mike Lupus, School Business Manager Justin Ladue, the Executive Assistant in DPW Kathy Dage, and also the Assistant Town Manager Jen Warren Diamond for a team effort in pulling all of that data together for submission. Again, if we didn't meet those kinds of deadlines, it's not just getting the grant money, it's pulling all together the compliance information and administration of that. We wouldn't be eligible for our next round. And hopefully, by the end of this, we'll have over $1 million that we will have been, not reimbursed, but funded for putting our community on a lower carbon footprint and actually improving our energy efficiency. Leading to energy efficiency, another great piece of news is that I wanted to share that the National Grid has a new proposal qualifying energy rebates for our projects in our schools that we're proposing. They have awarded a substantial rebate that will be totaling $17,160 upon completion of the energy efficiency grants that we have on tap. It was really important for us to try to access this, because the rebate rates are going to change, and they won't be as lucrative. I think that their finding is that more and more communities are trying to do this Green Communities route. And because of that, they did say for us to really put in these larger projects that we put on tap, because the rebate rates are not going to be as enhanced for a community. But to that end, they just announced to us that we are going to get that substantial rebate. The Veterans Appreciation Luncheon, I wanted to, because I know I didn't have any members of the board here that attended, it was a terrific, terrific event. We had over 160 attendees, two separate seedings. Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito had come, made a special appearance, and the State Representative Joe McKenna brought greetings officially for the town, and a couple of proclamations, including awarding a service award for all of the work that he does for our Oxford Honor Guard and our veterans. That award went to Terry Cummings. And an outstanding Oxford Honor Guard Community Service Award was given to our police chief. So it was great. We did have a number of employees that volunteered to serve our veterans that day, and we're looking forward to next year's event. The Clara Barton 200th Birthday. Everybody knows Clara. It's her 200th birthday. If she was here today, I'm sure she'd be really excited that we're still thinking about her. The Birthplace Museum in North Oxford is hosting an open house to celebrate her birthday this Saturday and Sunday. It will be on December 4th and 5th. The public is invited to attend. There will be, you know, tours being given of the house, her homestead, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They're free. They are asking people to wear masks. And for those people who are new to Oxford, they may not understand that Clara Barton is the founder of the American Red Cross. The next item is just to alert the board that we do have a Legislative Affairs Forum coming up, strengthening affordable housing in central Massachusetts. I thought the board might, some of you might be interested in that, since we are getting an increased number of 40B proposals to our community. That is being sponsored by the Legislative Affairs Committee that I serve on at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. It will be on December 3rd from, at 10:00 a.m. And there are a number of people who are going to be looking at how communities can help create municipal affordable housing trusts. And this, of course, along with a housing, Affordable Housing Overlay Plan and the Future Housing Production Plan that the Director of Planning and Economic Development had submitted some grant funding opportunities for the town, we're hoping in the future that we can use all of this information together to strengthen our affordable housing portfolio. The next is a very wonderful event every year. Its preparations are underway for this Sunday's annual tree lighting. This past snowy Saturday, I could give special props to our OCC Director Shelley Lambert, who worked both with the Scouts this year in decorating the tree. It was quite snowy and cold. The tree, of course, was put up by our DPW. We intend to light up all the trees on the common again this year. We did that starting last year. And we got so many great compliments from the public on how beautiful it looked. Our DPW wants to help out and do that again. The work crews have been stringing up the lights on the bandstand as well, restringing our big trees, and securing the garland and removing all the fallen leaves to get the place looking terrific for Santa this coming Sunday, who will arrive in a big sleigh. I'm told that the Fire Department is also planning to have a bit of a Christmas parade for Santa's arrival on the common. I did see our Fire Chief here. I think he wants to just explain a couple of details about that, and they're going to be getting the word out to the public. But it is a little bit different than we've done in the past. Thank you, Chief, if you could do that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Madam Town Manager, members of the Board of Selectmen, thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted to touch base with you and inform you of some changes that have come about as a result of last year's, what our tradition is. There's many traditions at Christmas time. One of them for the town was the getting Santa through all the neighborhoods in Oxford. And after last year of almost four hours on the road trying to hit every neighborhood, we ended up invariably missing some of the neighborhoods, because it's logistically very difficult to kind of meet that, you know, that goal. So we get together, the members of the staff, and looking at how things are currently with the increase that we have in call volume, operating out of two stations and the logistics behind it, we knew we had to make some changes. And some of it may be disappointing, but we felt it was best, because it gives everybody the same opportunities to be able to see Santa. And although Santa's used to the cold, living up in the North Pole, some of the firefighters out in the weather for that length of time, you know, don't recover as quickly as he may. So with 90 miles of roadway, and that's just the public roads, not the private roads, we thought, what's the best way to approach this? And we figured to tie it in with the Christmas tree lighting. And in discussions with Santa, decided that the best way to meet this would be to have a Holiday Lights Parade, in which we will take Santa from Station 2 down to the common, to the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, give everybody a chance to know the published route ahead of time. We're going to be starting at 6:00 p.m. Let me just make sure I'm referring to my notes. Yeah, we'll start at 5:00 p.m., proceed south down Main Street, ending at Sutton Avenue, beyond Tower 1, the newly refurbished tower truck that we had just gotten back recently. And then, like I said, take care of the lighting ceremony. We have a flyer. There'll be more announcements on Facebook. And we do realize and have given great thought to this, but, you know, we do realize that people are going to be disappointed, but we felt this was the best way to be able to serve the public and also to keep the tradition alive in some sense. So if there's any questions, I'll entertain them.
Wrong members?
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. And I wanted to say that I'm sure it was a very difficult decision. You know, one of the things that we have to recognize in this town is that this town is really very much built on traditions. And, you know, I'm sure you weighed it very heavily, but I, we will, the board will get some feedback on this from residents. And I have to, I have to admit, I'm disappointed as well. I don't know how we did it all those other years. Again, 90 miles of road is an awful lot, but we will, we will hear, we'll hear about it. So I appreciate you doing what you could. And, you know, if the opportunity presents itself to do it in the future, I think, you know, the residents have been through a lot over the last couple of years with COVID. So I don't know. I'm disappointed. I appreciate what you're doing, though, to try to replace it. But we'll, we're all going to hear some feedback on this.
And that's why I wanted, I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's why I wanted to make sure I made an appearance and at least let you know what, this was a decision that we came to recently and with great difficulty.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Great. Thank you very much, Chief, for coming in and explaining that.
Thank you. And I would, since we were just talking about COVID and residents, and nobody's experienced the COVID more than our first responders, I did want to give a COVID-19 update, because after experiencing a downward trend in our totally, total weekly cases before Halloween, you can see in your packets, I did put the recent contact tracing nurses' data. And you can see, we went from a total weekly count of 16 COVID cases to more than 37 for the respective first two weeks of November. This is coinciding with an increase that many people are seeing across central Massachusetts. In fact, the state's increase overall has been 8.5%, but central Mass has been more than double that. So we are experiencing more transmission of cases here in central Massachusetts. So once again, you know, if you look at the totality of where we were at last year for total monthly COVID cases for the month of October, last year, we were at 48 cases. This year, we were at 102 cases, so more than double. So there is a lot of concern that people are starting to ask Board of Health, and that is because they're learning about and hearing about this new Omicron South African variant of the virus. And I do think it means we're going to have a very challenging winter ahead. And we've seen that last year after Thanksgiving. So we had record numbers. And if we have this kind of transmission going on, my concern is that our people will be busy, once again, for those people who are not vaccinated and for the breakthrough cases. So please keep that in mind when you're shopping for the holidays and all of that. Roadway Improvements Forum. I know I've talked to the board. Once the date was set for the upcoming ballot question, I did want you to know that our DPW Director is scheduling an informational public forum on the roadway improvements, and that's scheduled for December 16th at 6:00 p.m. at the Senior Senate. This again is just an informational session. It's open to the public and residents, and we're encouraging them to go to attend, so they can learn more about the status of road improvements and the upcoming borrowing question. This is just to provide information so that people can understand what they're going to be voting on. The last, the reason why it's at the end is I got a late word this afternoon that our Open Space Recreation Planning Grant is being awarded. It's very exciting. I wanted to end my report with that excellent news. I just had received it from our Director of Planning and Economic Development, who informed me that we're going to be getting a $30,000 grant to help us update our expired open space and recreation plan. This has been an item that's been on my whiteboard in my office for the past two years. Once I found out we had an open space recreation plan, but it had long since expired, and if we don't have a current plan, we cannot be eligible or even apply for a number of substantial park grants, recreation grants, or even conservation grants to acquire land or to put it to good use for mitigation and wetlands protection. But once we get this together, it automatically makes us eligible. And in fact, when you have a current plan that's awarded formally by the state, it will give you special recognition, and you have to determine what one of your major projects will be. So this will be great. It's a wonderful distinction to know that we're sort of getting further along in our master plan implementation efforts. And I want to thank Tony Sousa for his collaborative efforts in making that grant come through. And since you're close to the time period, we'll come back to the American Rescue Plan, if that's all right.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
With the COVID-19 update, I appreciate that you put that in there, because I've been thinking about it. And there's a very good chance that I may have missed the answer to the question that I'm going to ask. And if I did, I apologize. But I remember we had helped our elderly population obtain the vaccine. Is there any way we can help with access to the booster, given the uptake that we've had?
So on my previous report, yeah, no, 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 that's okay. I actually started to explore with the state their vaccine bus. And the problem was, is actually coming up with a date. And then we also discovered we needed to at least register 25 people in advance. And it sounds very easy on the surface, but because I was down, you know, a person in that office, and I didn't have anybody right at that moment step forward from the Board of Health, we didn't do it. But it is on my radar. I do want to do it. I have already reached out to the state to formally acknowledge that we want this. We provided them with the same data that I've been providing you, which they thought was very helpful. And so I think we're going to be able to do this. It's just finding a time, right? Not before we had, you know, the town meeting, and then we've had the election and I just, yeah, it was just not the best timing. But I do want to do it. So it's a timely question. Thank you for it.
Who is Kelly?
Ladies' room. Sweet. Mm-hmm, yes.
The next item on our agenda is a nuisance or dangerous dog hearing for Cash and Penny. Dog owner is David J. Tremblay of 237A Main Street, Oxford. Let me read the public notice sent to the record. Pursuant to Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Oxford Board of Selectmen has received a nuisance or dangerous dog complaint regarding two dogs, Penny and Cash, owned by David Tremblay and located at 8 Wayne Ave, Oxford, Mass. 01540. A public hearing will be held regarding this matter on November 30th, 2021, at 7:30 PM at the Oxford Town Hall, Second Floor Meeting Room, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. 01540. Written comments from the public will be accepted before and/or during this hearing. And at this moment, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
And make that motion?
Second.
And I will call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in the affirmative, public hearing is open. Anyone in the public that will be speaking on this matter, could you please raise your right hand? If you were going to speak at all, okay. Do you all solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody coming before us, I would ask you to just issue your name, give you your name and address, and, okay, I would, I'll start with the complainant. Who would that be? Who made the complaint? Yes, if you would just come up and... Hi.
Yes, my name is Stephanie Dunning. My dog is the one that was attacked, his name is Rocky. Basically, my goal of this complaint that I did was basically just to make sure that this were to not happen again. Actually, I wasn't even the one that was there, I was at work, it was my roommate who took him. So she was the one that was involved in the incident and everything that happened to her. She was trying to make it, she was trying to be here, but obviously she's not here now, so I would speak on her behalf.
Okay. Board members, any questions at this moment?
Mr. Chairman, do you want her address for the record?
Oh, yes.
Oh, 237 Main Street.
Thank you.
Oxford.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. That's all you have for now. Then I'm going to have our Animal Control Officer, Kelly Flynn, to come up and report on her investigation and recommendations.
Good evening.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi. On October 19th, 2021, at 14:43, Oxford ACO Ed Hart received a call from the Oxford Police Department Dispatch regarding a dog attack in front of 6 Wayne Avenue. Ms. Mariana Powers was running with her roommate's dog, a tri-colored Beagle mix named Rocky, when two dogs ran out from 8 Wayne Ave and attacked Rocky. During the disturbance, Rocky sustained injuries to his left ear and his neck. Ms. Powers sustained bite wounds to her right hand and left forearm. The two dogs, Penny, a black-and-white spade female pit bull mix, and Cash, a brindle-colored neutered male pit bull mix, are owned by David Tremblay, 8 Wayne Ave. When Oxford Police Officers Heather Picking and Daniel Osmus and Oxford EMS arrived at the scene, the dogs were separated. Ms. Powers was treated at the scene, but refused to be taken to the hospital. ACO Ed Hart spoke to the father of the owner of the two attacking dogs, David Tremblay, Sr. Mr. Tremblay, Sr. said that he opened the front door and the dogs ran onto the porch. The gate was not fastened shut, and the dogs ran out and attacked Rocky. Mr. Tremblay, Sr. told ACO Hart that he is blind and could not see exactly what happened. Neither dog, Penny or Cash, was vaccinated of rabies or licensed with the town of Oxford at the time of the incident, but both dogs are up to date now. On Monday, November 23rd, 2021, at 1600, ACO Hart and myself went to 8 Wayne Ave and spoke to the property owner, Mr. David Tremblay, Sr., about possible improvements to the property to prevent further incidents. Mr. Tremblay showed us into the backyard, which has a six-foot-high solid fence around the back perimeter. The fence appears to be very sturdy, and we do not have any reports about the dogs escaping from this area. The front porch has an approximately three-and-a-half-foot-high sturdy picket-type fence with two gates. Mr. Tremblay recently repaired the gates, and they had appropriate hinges and latches. And I think I'm stopping at this point.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, any questions at this point for Kelly, board members? All right. How about the dog owner? Is that person here? Would you like to come up and say, again, if you could just state your name and address? That would help.
My name is David Tremblay, 8 Wayne Ave.
All right.
I'm Kayleen Boudis, and I live at 8 Wayne Ave as well.
All right, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say to the board?
So I wasn't home when it happened, obviously.
Neither one of us were home.
My dad had opened my door to check if I was home, and that's when the dog got out. I made, I have springs on the gates now, too. When they came to look at it, I didn't have springs. I'm going to do everything I can to prevent it from happening again, that's basically all I can say.
Okay, very good. Board members, any questions?
I have a question.
Sure, yes.
In the report, it did indicate that they weren't, the dogs weren't, the dog wasn't licensed?
He wasn't. They are now both.
They are now, though.
But they are now.
And vac, I think.
And vaccinated. And their vaccinations had just expired, and because of COVID, we didn't bring them, and we just didn't get around to it since, but they are fully vaccinated, up to date with everything now.
Okay. And the vaccination and everything is down, is at the clerk's office?
Yep. Yeah, I have the copies here.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, anyone else? All right, that's all. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this matter? All right, then, at this point, I would entertain a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing?
Second?
We have a motion and a second? I'll call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative, the public hearing is closed. Board members, what is your thoughts? At this point, what we are doing is trying to make a decision of whether this is a... All right, I guess then Kelly's going to come up, right? And this is, and you're going to make a, give us your recommendation on whether we're voting as a nuisance, dangerous, or dismissing?
So my recommendation is that the dogs be deemed a, this was kind of a little bit close, because we haven't had an incident with them before. And I do think that they were not targeting a person, they were targeting the dog, but the dog did get injured, and a person got injured as well, trying to defend her dog or her roommate's dog. So because of that, I, my recommendation would be dangerous dog. I don't know if you want to discuss that before I do.
No.
I do.
Yeah, what's that?
What are your, I'm sure this is going to be a hard, hard answer, but what are typically your decision points between dangerous and nuisance?
So typically nuisance is more of like barking, being loose all the time, defecating on somebody else's property, that type of thing. You know, this, the dogs, I don't know how long both of them have been living there.
Six and seven years.
They've had them for quite a while, I think, and I have not had any issue before. But because a person and another dog did get injured, that makes it, you know, pretty serious, so. So I did include the copy of the dangerous dog laws. So, you know, it is up to you to determine whether they are dangerous or nuisance. I definitely would not dismiss it, that's for sure. But they did, again, actually injure a dog and a person.
Any other question?
I just need a clarification.
Yeah, of course, that's what we have.
Is the dog owner here?
Yes.
How about the owner of the dog who was injured? She's...
That was the lady that spoke for us.
Okay, so, oh, okay, I thought she...
Yeah, no, this is the one who lived, my roommate who was injured, and she's with Rocky.
Who, did you say that there was someone who hasn't gotten here from work yet?
She just got here.
She just...
Oh, okay, my apologies, okay. That's all, I just needed clarification on that, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, then we're back to that point of what the board would like to do. Is this a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog? Dogged, excuse me. Yes?
Unfortunately, I'm not, I like to take your opinion, so unfortunately, I do agree with you in that I do unfortunately feel that we need to deem those as dangerous dogs. I'm sure they're great pets, but if they do have the ability to run out and do that, even unintentionally, unfortunately, I do think that because they did attack the dog and then inherently injured a human as well, I'm inclined to agree with you that they do need to be deemed dangerous.
Can I ask a question?
I agree with Megan. Now, the public hearing's closed, I'm sorry.
So I'm just looking at the recommendations of Kelly here as a dangerous dog. From, from what I'm looking at, if we were to go with your recommendation, most of, they've already taken remedial action to make sure that this shouldn't happen again on the property by correcting the gate. And then the other recommendations don't, if we were to go with that, don't seem too burdensome to the owners or the dog in general, so.
Well, we can't really go that, right now, we can only make a determination, is this a dangerous do, are these dangerous dogs?
Okay.
Or nuisance dog? I think we need to not think about anything she may say afterwards.
Okay.
So we want to, I think, stick to that.
Are you making a motion?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I would make a motion that we follow the Animal Control Officer's recommendation and deem these dogs dangerous dogs.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion from the board?
Jen?
I know.
Oh, we're going to...
Sorry, I need to clarify my motion, that I am making the recommendation that they be deemed dangerous dogs because they have injured another dog and a human, following the recommendation of the Animal Control Officer.
Mike, do you want to second that amendment?
I'll second the amendment. Do we have to also put in there the...
The recommendation?
Yes.
The recommendation is next.
Next, okay, then yes, I second the amendment.
Just so that it's not an arbitrary, because I said so, motion?
Yes.
Which you kind of did before you made the motion.
Right, and then I just didn't say it in it.
You didn't add it in, so.
I second the amendment to the motion.
All right, any more discussion? Then I will call a vote on this being dangerous dogs.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. It's five in affirmative, I'm sorry, but these are, we have asserted these are dangerous dogs. So that will take us to your recommendation, Kelly. All right, we're back to you. Thank you.
So Oxford Animal Control recommends that the hearing authority order the following. First, that the dogs be humanely restrained, provided, however, that no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including, but not limited to, a tree, post, or building. And under this section, Animal Control recommends that, one, the property owner attaches self-closing mechanisms to each gate on the front porch so that the gates swing shut and fasten of their own accord. Number two, that the front porch is a catch area only, that the dogs are not allowed on the front porch unless they are leashed and muzzled, and that would be primarily to be taking them in and out, you know, off the property. That the dogs are not, I'm sorry, that the dogs are only allowed out in the fenced-in backyard when an adult is at home, and that the door that leads from the garage to the inside of the house has a self-closing mechanism as well as the two gates. And next, that when removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dogs, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. And last, that the owner or keeper of the dogs provide to the licensing authority or Animal Control Officer or other entity identified in the order, information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including, but not limited to, photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing, or microchip implantations, or a combination of any such methods of identification. So in this case, I recommend microchip implantation and pictures for each dog to be on record.
Board members, yes?
Are either dog currently microchipped?
Not to my knowledge, according to their...
I didn't even know that was going to happen.
Okay. So we would have to consider a timeframe for that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't even know what a reasonable timeframe would be with COVID.
It is a little tough right now with veterinary appointments, but I'm sure that I could call, well, I don't know who your normal vet is.
Lester.
Lester. If they, for some reason, couldn't get the dogs in quick enough, I think I, we have a working relationship with Webbs Lake Vet, that I'm sure they would fit them in.
In their reasonably priced?
A month, a couple of weeks.
How much is that?
How much is it, and like?
You know, I think, if you're at a visit anyway, I think they're like $50, but...
How much?
Maybe 50. But there are clinics that do them even for cheaper than that, like second chance and stuff like that.
What is the label online?
So the... They've never left the house before, because we don't even...
In seven years.
So the microchip is an identifier, so if the dogs did get loose and were running loose... So the microchip is an identifier, so if the dogs did get loose and were running around and I picked them up, I can scan the dog and and know who the dog is and who owns it.
Picture would do that.
Picture is not, not as reliable as a microchip.
All right. Four members.
Did you say what you think would be a reasonable timeframe?
I think maybe 30 days, a month.
That's what I thought, a month. Second man, Daniels, do you have some? Oh, okay. All right, so we're back to a motion. Do we agree with Kelly's recommendations? And are we going to make a motion to approve those?
I would make a motion that we follow animal control officers' recommendations with the addition that the microchip be implanted within, and pictures provided within 30 days.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to follow Animal Control's recommendation. Any other comments? Then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that's four and affirmative, one negative. I'm sorry, but that's, that's the recommendation, so. And we wish you all very much good luck in the future. Hopefully, we won't see you again. All right. So that brings us back to town manager's report in section four.
Give you guys a copy. As you know, the American Rescue Plan is a second legislative congressional act that occurred in the United States government's response to the COVID pandemic. And I am actually glad that, you know, and having the opportunity to talk about it now, like any particular congressional act. We had the CARES Act that started. We are still, with that particular piece of legislation, still seeking reimbursements that have not yet been processed by the federal government. The distinction between the CARES Act and what we call the American Rescue Plan Act, which is also colloquially known as ARPA. The ARPA Act differs from the CARES Act in the sense that the CARES Act was administered by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts had acted as almost like a broker between cities and towns, what they were requesting for assistance and how they would be reimbursed. So the ARPA Plan Act is not like that. The ARPA Act is one in which we will have the fiduciary relationship with the United States Treasury, which puts a lot more burden on us for being able to comply with however we're going to spend this particular grant money. So let me do a little bit of an overview. As I said, the ARPA Act was signed into law just this past March, 11th, 2021. It was a $350 billion portion of the bill. It's even more than that, that's going to go for Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. That is targeting municipalities as well as state governments. There's a lot more to ARPA that we're not even going to discuss here, where there's increased federal funding that's going to the assistance firefighter firefighters assistance grants, and many other things that hopefully will also have an opportunity to try to seek funding for for other needs. But just so that you know, we're speaking specifically this evening about the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. So that $350 billion across the country, there's 8.7 billion slated for Massachusetts, 5.3 billion of that is for the state, and 3.4 billion is for cities and towns. There's very specific categories for municipal uses and eligible uses for the ARPA grant money. And it's important to keep noting the multitude of reporting requirements. So just because they signed it on March 11th doesn't mean all the details had been forthcoming by the United States government. Just like many other types of federal laws, the easy part sometimes is the voting part. The agencies then have to work out legislative intent and figure out things. I put on the quote that comes right out of the Division of Local Services that the recipients of funds from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, including municipalities, are considered the prime recipients of the Treasury and are and not the states, and that means we're going to be responsible for doing that. That meant that myself, our finance director, our emergency service director, everyone has come together to try to understand the guidance that was going to be issued by the federal government. The federal government has gone through a couple iterations about what's eligible, what's not eligible. From the day that I heard from our United States Congressman, Jim McGovern, the day after they passed this, the, it sounded like there were a lot of things that were going to be covered. Now there are specific categories. So let's be sure that we have all our ducks in a row before we allocate the funds, which is why you're seeing a lot of communities not really knowing, you know, what's going to be eligible and what they're going to be on the hook for, for being able to comply. So we are, and I'm going to go over the money that we have received so far and the money that is there for eligible uses. So the federal government will disperse funds to a community, and then the community can use those funds for the specific uses, but will have to actually show that those uses are valid. So if we expend the money for a particular use, for, you know, let's say revenue loss, and we're found that our revenue loss calculations are not correct, and we've already used that money, that means the town would be on the hook for that money to go back to the federal government. So there are a lot of communities that absolutely, if they don't have a certain ability to use the funds, either we'll be giving the money back to the federal government, or we'll have to be extremely creative on how to do that. The reason why the bill became very expansive in these categories that I'm going to go over with you is, I think, because it was such significant money that they were trying to figure out how could municipalities use it in a variety of ways to help them for what they might have experienced during the pandemic. So the final guidelines have been just recently issued by the United States Treasury called the interim final rule. And we're going to have a maximum amount of years to expend the funds. And we're also going to have to maintain records for at least five years on those expenditures. So what they're asking for the timetable here is that, let me go into the expenditure categories first, and then I'll tell you about the timetable. So the expenditure, these are the major categories. There's seven of them. One is for public health expenses that a community's experienced. The second one is negative economic impacts. The third is about social services, and they may not necessarily be inherent in the municipality. It could be contracted social services that a community or a city has paid for. Premium pay is another category. Infrastructure is the fifth category. Revenue replacement is the sixth category. And administrative costs associated with the pandemic is the seventh category. The actual timetable, and I'm going to get back to the categories in a moment after I talk a little bit about where we're at with funding and where we're at with considering those seven categories. The ARPA timetable is that we have the expenditures, expenditures have to be obligated by 2024. What that means is that we have to come up with the plan on how we think we're going to spend these grant monies. Then we will have up until December of 2026 to actually use the money or expend it and then be asking for validation for those expenditures. So the intent here, even though they wanted to get the money into the hands of municipalities, they're also giving us some time to figure out so that we don't get ourselves caught in a bad situation where we've used money and then we have to pay it back. So their intent was to get it to the municipalities as quickly as possible. So there has been, half of the ARPA money was supposed to be sent to cities and towns, and I'm going to talk a little bit about where we're at for that. And then there's a second half that is going to be awarded next summer, where within 12 months of when we got the first amount. So where is Oxford with all of this? I'm sorry for the small table, but that's what I've been given through the Division of Local Services, and I tried to expand it. So what you're seeing here is the more important is the bottom portion. So our 50%, there are two ways we're getting money sent to us for grant funding from the federal government. One is through a direct allocation from municipal government. And that first total, that, no, not the first, the total amount for that is going to be That municipal allocation will get 50%, we're supposed to get 50%. And we're also going to have a county allocation. A county allocation, because the federal government recognized that there are many places across the states where there were regional efforts in expenditures to fight COVID. The county allocation for the town of Oxford has been determined to be $2,721,084. That's a total allocation, if we were to get all that money and use it, of $4,187,386, a very significant amount of money. So where are we at? On the right-hand side, on the bottom, I put down that we have received the 50% of the funds. So our municipal allocation for the year of 2021 so far has been sent, and it's sitting there, for $733,150. And the 50% of the county allocation is $1,360,542. That's a total of $2,093,692. So money has come so far. It's in our account. And I want to go back to the major areas for consideration. I'm sorry for the blue, and that's actually coming out blue. Actually, I thought it was gray. On my printout sheet, it looks gray, right? So I wouldn't have put blue. So areas under consideration. So I've sat with our finance director, and we have done numerous webinars. We've actually spoke with our financial auditors who talked to us specifically about revenue replacement. But the four areas, the five areas out of the seven that we're looking at most most closely are as follows. They're in blue. I put public health, premium pay, infrastructure, revenue replacement, and administrative costs. Those are the, those are the five out of the seven areas that we're considering. And the reason why I say it's considering is because we have to know what really qualifies and whether we're going to be able to produce the documentation, which will be substantive. Anybody who's done federal grants will know that. So, and they didn't have all of the rulings on what would qualify and what wouldn't. So let's take the first one, public health. So I can talk about what is, you know, considered to be eligible. Now, I'm giving you the broadest of terminology here of some of the areas that they say could be considered, but we're going to actually have to, you know, petition the federal government. It would be smart to do that, to make sure we think that this is going to be qualifying. There are some things that are pretty straightforward under public health. So the public health means anything that related to our response for mitigating or preventing the spread of COVID. It could include such things as costs that were associated with vaccinations, testing, monitoring, and contact tracing. Not only what has happened retroactively, but as you know, we're actually still incurring costs going forward. Now, the CARES Act funding has all stopped at the end of October. So even though we still have contact tracing nurses and we're still buying PPE and all of that stuff, and some of that hasn't even been reimbursed yet, even though we've put in for funding reimbursement through the CARES Act, we have it retrospectively and then going forward. So those continuing, those continuing costs are going to be there. So that's considered under the public health measure category. PPE, personal protective equipment includes everything from the very expensive gowning and gloving to actually sanitizing supplies and equipment, equipment that helps us do that for our senior vans, the supplies that our janitors using continuously, all of those things. Another piece of that, if you read the language very closely, are ventilation upgrades. That's why it was interesting to see when the state was trying to earmark it under the recent legislation, which has not been finalized in both the House and the Senate, there are a lot of legislators that put in for significant upgrades to HVAC systems. You know, under the, under the parameters saying that if you have better air quality in a building, you know, you have less spread. But we're talking about, you know, major upgrades. And if we had sort of known that piece of it, I might have actually even talked to our legislators about looking to earmark more of that for, say, the town hall or anything, because we don't have great ventilation there. But when you think of that part of it, we weren't thinking of that kind of major potential category. So the sanitizing, the ventilation upgrades, and also there are some, I mean, we're going to be looking at that language very closely. COVID sick medical and family leave reimbursements, and we're going to have to look to see what really truly qualifies for that. So that's the, the category of public health. The next one I said that we're looking at is premium pay. And premium pay is not just for regular employees that we've already had prior to COVID that work closely and directly with mitigating or responding to COVID. We would call those essential employees. But it also relates to any new hires that we may have had to have to help us with staffing and mitigating and addressing the pandemic. It also involves payroll benefits. And so when you're looking at this category, what they're expressing very much to every municipality is make sure you have a definition and documentation about what essential workers are. There were some communities that actually defined every employee as essential before this legislation came out, because they were concerned that once legislation came out from the federal government that they might not be eligible if they didn't declare everyone in municipal government as an essential employee. Of course, that now has ramifications for how you might allocate premium pay going forward. But one of the things that they do say is you've got to make sure you define and document what an essential worker is. This kind of premium pay can be retrospective to the start of the pandemic, or it can be in addition to what workers have already received. Even if they worked, you know, overtime and they were doing additional hours into capacity, premium pay can be on top of that. So there are obvious and less obvious, I call them, essential employees. We might be thinking of the public safety, the public health, the human services, and others who we would absolutely say are essential, right? But we also have people like our animal control officer and our custodians and many other people who had to deal with coming, you know, front and center. And we had other people who were responding to whatever major issue we had at that time. So I think we want to be very careful about how we define that. But there are some communities that have recognized that all employees are, and we'll have to provide that documentation. But the federal government is going to ask you to be very specific. So there may be communities that have talked about giving all employees something, but the premium pay piece that is being funded by this federal grant would be specific for essential employees. You cannot, even if you want to, we want to categories the fact that there are a lot of town employees that, you know, did a lot of due diligence, if we want to recognize them for the chaos that they've experienced in trying to maintain services. We just have to make sure that that money isn't necessarily coming directly from, from this. But we have an idea of how we can maybe potentially capture that going forward. But there's also time that was spent mitigating and responding to COVID that we would consider. And we'd look at the positions that were hired to respond to COVID. They would have had to been brought on on January 27, 2020 and after. But if we've had to also contract and provide, have services provided by somebody who, who had to come in the middle of the pandemic that was deemed essential because of our functioning, we, we can also include those kinds of people. And what we need to do is, as we're starting to look at this, is look at all of the places we may have spent money and find out which categories we can actually go after for reimbursement. So there's that piece of premium pay is one category as well. So infrastructure is another category. So I said there was a lot of money here. If, if people don't have water, sewer, and broadband in their community, they don't have enterprise funds, they're going to have a hard time justifying 4.0. they're going to have a hard time justifying $4.1 million for just premium pay for employees. So, the reason why I think the federal government broadened their definitions to include water, sewer, you, you have to understand, I think it was because they were concerned that the communities would need that kind of ability to put the money to good use. So, in our case, we do have water, not that we own, but we have sewer that we could use infrastructure money towards, so that we wouldn't just be handing it back to the federal government if we can't find another category. We don't do, even though we do human service work through our senior center, we don't have a regular human service department where we might be able to allocate those kinds of funds. There are communities that are also looking at the economic impacts, which also is included under the measures in which we can think about, and some communities have, where they have given grants out to businesses. And that's a whole nother ballgame on how you would do it and what you would do. We did some of that already by alerting businesses to what they were eligible for from the federal government and the state government. But that is another area that some larger communities, which are getting even more money, have thought about doing, and that requires a whole processing and making sure that you're providing equity and being able to do that. But back to infrastructure. So, water, sewer, broadband are some of the areas that would be eligible. The, in order for a project to be eligible, so say if we wanted to allocate money towards sewer, they do have some timeframes that if there was some work that was already started, that it can be eligible towards a project that had already started, but that the costs incurred have to incur by a certain date. It also has to comply with the Federal Water Pollution Control or the Safe Drinking Water Act. So, if you can comply with those, then you can maybe access either water or sewer. The broadband service levels, there are some communities that are looking at that, but you can't just put in any broadband. It has to comply with certain service levels, and there's a lot more detail to that. So, so that's another category. And the last two categories is revenue replacement. We did not think initially, based on the way that the federal government was putting out the requirements, we did not think we could do revenue replacement. We didn't think we were going to be able to capture it. We've captured a lot in CARES Act, but in terms of actually looking at the loss of revenue, the way that we thought was going to need to be calculated, we were concerned that we wouldn't be able to show the burden of proof, even though we think we have had the losses. So, we actually had recently had an in-depth back and forth with our financial auditors, who came up with a very strong and reliable, and confidently reliable formula. And because of that, in that calculation, Katie had asked, with our financial auditor's approval from me, to go ahead and try to get, you know, and submit for revenue replacement based on this formula. Now, to do revenue replacement, if we, and we have already sought that to the federal government, and you can see this calculation on the side, which basically does say that based on the revenue calculation for lost revenue, we would have over $500,000 that we can actually justify. And we have it as a pool of money that is aside, that in the future could be used for a number of operational issues that no longer are tied specifically to these other criteria. You see what I'm saying? So, revenue replacement criteria was something separate. And now that we have put in and had that certification, that means that we could use it for a number of things, but there are several categories you cannot use it for. You cannot use it for debt service, you can't use it for pension, you can't use it for reserve transfers, or putting it in stabilization, and you can't use it for legal settlements. But we may be able to use it for some other things. So, so we've handled one piece of the five areas that we wanted to do, and that just happened. So, that revenue replacement, what they do is they, they honor it out of the $4.1 million. Otherwise, if we couldn't show revenue replacement, it would be being given back to the federal government. The final category is administrative category. So, originally Katie and I talked about this. We, you know, for the CARES Act, knowing how burdensome that was going to be in real time while we were incurring costs to try to get the state, who then was going to the federal government, to approve our reimbursement requests, we went through Municipal Strategies Group, and they have been phenomenally helpful, especially during the pandemic, for keeping the Ts crossed and the Is dotted for us in order to be able to get valid reimbursements. And that's been happening, and I can only tell you that if we hadn't had that, we would still be very behind in asking for our approvals of the monies that we have spent to try to address the, the overall pandemic. Having said that, the federal government through the OPERA Act understands this will be very burdensome to report. Just because they give you the money doesn't mean it won't. And that's why they're giving you that length of time, to be able to make sure that, you know, everything is approved and to make sure you have the data to support it going forward, so that they don't come back. The last thing that lawmakers want to do is give you money and then reach in and take it back. And we don't want that either. So, you can cover administrative costs for dealing with robust documentation that's going to be required, depending on which projects, areas that we think about funding. Obviously, if it was a sewer project, because, you know, we think it's important, then that's going to have a whole different ballgame of reporting mechanisms. And I'm sure that'll put our DPW engineer on, turn him on his head for what he'd have to report. But it can cover that. It can also recover several areas for reporting that that's going to be required. There's going to be an interim report, a project expenditure report, a recovery plan performance report. And you also are going to have the administrative costs associated with transferring to other units of government. So, I don't know what that will look like. I'm hoping that Katie and I will be able to handle the majority of that. But if it looks like it's going to be very difficult, then I would want to take some of that money and make sure we have somebody who's very familiar with how to do federal reporting. Otherwise, we could get ourselves into a whole hill of trouble. Next step. So, I wanted to provide you with an overview, because the next steps relate to what the federal government's telling municipalities to do at this stage. And I did put in your packets information that just recently came from KP Law and a couple of others. So this is all very new. Like I said, it's, it hadn't even been really defined until very recently. But they're recommending a couple of things. One is to prepare to manage the grant, which we have already started to do. We've gone and, like I said, we've attended many webinar. We've spoken with our financial auditors. We've spoken with the administrative consultants with our CARES Act. And we have spoken to a lot of other towns as well, to see where they were at and what they were thinking about. As we've been making sense on how to prepare to manage the grant, we also are being told that we should establish a grant management plan and look at necessary legal consultations, accounting, and audit support. Obviously, even KP Law, as our legal counsel, is getting into this, because they recognize that communities have a lot of legal questions to ask about what may constitute something that is eligible and what may not. The calculation for revenue loss amount for the year 2020, like I said, that's one major piece, luckily, because we were just doing our financial audits, that we had this back and forth conversation with our auditor, and they worked very closely with Katie and have devised this formula and is being, is using that. And that's why we're able to actually put in for that, and it's been certified. So that's an important piece that we've done in the next step. Writing a formal eligibility determination with supporting materials, emails, meeting minutes, for each program or project that this coronavirus local recovery funds can be used and eligible for. So we need to do that. If we're going to do the essential employee remuneration, we're going to have to make sure that we get that formal eligibility determination, and then we'll go forward with that. Implementing process to collect and report financial data and key performance indicators to the federal government. So, once we decide, you know, which major pockets we can apply this federal money to, we obviously got to define the process and implement it on how we're going to collect and report on the data. And because, like I said, this was fairly new, I think what we need to do is explore what the actual requirements are going to be for each area and make sure that we can actually comply with it. And, you know, I'm confident that we can do it, but, you know, there's still reams of paper that we're going through to make sure. So, but in those areas, I just want you to know that, that is what we're trying to do, is look at what I think will add value to the town, and also, obviously, what we can do in as timely a fashion as possible and make the right decision. You know that I went to a conference, the first one in two years since COVID, with a lot of other municipal managers, and we did get an update about the OPERA funding for essential workers. And what we're told from our Massachusetts Municipal Association work leadership is that the federal, the state government hasn't even defined what they think they're going to pay for their essential employees, and that there, even though we had received some letters that have been circulating to a number of municipalities about, from some of the unions, police unions and the like, and we're looking for the maximum that could possibly be awarded, they're telling us to just be a little cautious and pause, because it would be helpful to find out what the state is going to do before we launch in to say, okay. And you have to think too, that if we set the example in Oxford, we might be affecting a lot of communities around us that may or may not be able to do that. So, we're trying to, to look at that. And there may be some communities do a lot lower, and, you know, and we wind up doing higher for, I'm just talking about essential employees. But there are other areas here that we got to think about, and we have to just make sure that, however we're going to do it, that we're going to be able to provide the, the documentation. And so, that's it in a snapshot, really, it's volumes of information. But I was trying to do my best to capture where we're at and also, you know, prevent myself from having to do it later when we're actually going through the entire process of defining how we're going to actually use the money.
I just have some quick follow-up questions.
Sure.
That was wonderfully informative. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could we give some sort of, like, interim acknowledgement to the letter that we received? Just so that it's not kind of just hanging out there in limbo, just so that they understand that it's been received and that we're at least working on it, looking into it, type of thing? Just so that they know that they've been heard and that we're considering it?
Sure. I don't have a problem with that. I, I think that the heads of the, the state union heads have been very much keyed into this, to the point where they understood that $25,000 per employee, when the federal government was saying, could possibly be, everybody kind of latched on to that and just said, but they, they know, like, the Mass Municipal Managers Association knows. And so, I think, you know, part of my point was not to do that until I had an opportunity to present it to the board, and also talk at least articulately enough about the process behind it. Acknowledging that I get the letter, that's fine, but I would like to be able to also provide them, you know, with this snapshot here, which I would do in the letter, so that they know we are thinking about that. And obviously, there's nobody, I think, that wants to be able to do something for employees more than I do, because, you know, being here every day during the pandemic and watching how all of our employees had to respond and how much difficulty it was for them, whether it was the trying to learn how to work from home, or whether it was trying to actually take care of people that you didn't know were going to make you sick, or walking into a building that you were afraid was going to make you sick. It's, it's been pretty profound, and I want to do something for them. I just want to make sure that when we do it, it's, it's going to be adequate. And also, you know, when we do it, it will be something that the federal government will, will approve.
Sure, yeah. I'm not saying to even commit to a number, just more let them know that they've been heard and that we're working on it. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for that. We go to Selectman Community Announcements, Selectman Triano.
First, I want to say, welcome to Norm.
Thank you.
It's nice to have a fist.
It's the first time I've ever sat up here and never said anything.
And then I just wanted to, I was looking through our books and I couldn't find it. What rules do we follow? Is it because, is it, do we follow the Seamus Town Meeting? Is it Demeter's or is it Roberts as a board?
What rule?
Yes, like parliamentary procedure?
I have no clue.
It's either in the, listed in the Board of Selectment Policies or specifically in the Charter what we're supposed to be following.
I looked through it, and it says it for town meeting, but it doesn't say it for the board. I just didn't know if we had that somewhere.
It is written out in one of those two binders that we have, what we're supposed to be following. So, I'll, I'll look it up again if I can find it and shoot you a message about it.
If I could, just because I couldn't find it, so. And then the other question that I had is I would like to ask you, if you could please put on a future agenda, because we couldn't come to an agreement at the last reorganization meeting, now that we have five members, if we could revisit it as we stated that we would at a previous meeting? I did send you an email, but I didn't hear back from you. So, I just wanted to bring it up and request it for a future agenda, please. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Selectman Cheryl LeBlanc.
Let's see. First of all, I just wanted to welcome Mr. LeBlanc to, to this, to the table, the table. It's wonderful to have another fifth member, especially someone who's experienced, so thank you. Just wanted to also say, we had a phenomenal voter turnout. We had a lot of people say that they voted and whatnot, that was great to see. Had to, thank you, we had a great Veterans Day parade. Wanted to thank the VFW and the Allegion for pulling that together. That was great as well. Glad to see, I, first of all, I'm thankful to the town manager for letting us know about the sign. I have had some comments about that. It, I don't know if the high school sign is going to overshadow, if, if our sign will overshadow the high school sign or vice versa. But I love that high school sign. I think that's just very, very informative, and, you know, everything is on it. So I'm hoping that we have the same, you know, as well. One comment that I, I have heard, well, not many, not one, I've had many comments. A couple of things in regards to the downtown. So, we do have these islands in the stream, so to speak. So we have these islands that people are not very thrilled about. And I was just wondering, I know Jared's not here, Jen, and you didn't know that I was going to ask about this, but do we have some word from Lynchy when they're going to finish those things up, or if we're delayed?
I, I don't have any answer. If I put it on the agenda, we can bring it in, you know, I can have a better idea, I don't know.
That's okay, that's fine. Maybe we can stick it on the agenda, just because we get so, we're getting so many comments about it. It's hard to give in, give in info.
Once it's finished, I think people will be surprised. There was some, a couple of different things that are happening, but, yeah, it's, it's, I'm going to defer it to the, to another agenda time period.
That'd be great. If we could do that, that would be helpful. And I think it would be helpful for residents, you know, as well. And the other item that I had gotten some phone calls on is that, at the town meeting back in October, we had received some, we had, what was this? It, we had, the town had approved the $200,000 for the design of whatever it is that's going on. And I had sent an email over to the chair. We kind of went back and forth a little bit. Just wondering if, I know there's a lot going on, but I'm just wondering if there was any further development on those plans that were being done, or anything along those lines? Or community meeting? Nothing yet, right?
No, I think there's, there's definitely some misunderstanding. You know, a community meeting was not a hearing, it was something that came out of the, and, and again, this is not on the agenda, this is not a community announcement. If, if you'd like it on a future agenda, I'll talk to Jared and we'll go over it again. I think we were pretty explicit in explaining at town meeting what the purpose of that was. I do think there may be some people who have a misconception of what has happened, and those people who may or may not have been at a public forum, no different than the public forum that we just had on the roadway, and they're being confused with one another. So, that's fine. We can, we can have it as a